Well, we've got three minutes till 7:00.
Yeah, that clock, oh, that clock.
Yeah, that clock's better than that.
Sure. All right. All right. Before the meeting starts, I want just to announce to everybody, this is Faith Dawkins' last meeting with us as our interim superintendent, because Dr. Jeffrey Schuler starts with us September 2nd, so he'll be here for our September 10th board meeting. And I just want to say that this transition has been so smooth because of Mrs. Dawkins' efforts. It certainly hasn't been simply a caretaker position for these last three months. She's had a lot of challenges come up, she's had a lot of things to do, a lot of unusual things come up. And all for the best, she's handled them with elegance and grace and poise and professionalism, and so we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I don't think anybody's ever got a standing position.
So, is there kale in the cake?
There's no kale in the cake. As you all know, there's a worldwide shortage of kale.
They thought we could do smoothies.
And so they were, I guess they asked if they could put newspaper clippings in there instead, and we said no. We're not going to go that far. I don't know if you all saw the Bob Huff's?
Yes.
Article in the Tribune about the worldwide shortage of kale, and how they should just eat his shredded newspaper articles instead, so anyway.
They all give me grief because my license plate is kale, it's been that way for four years, but now everybody knows what kale is, and there's a shortage.
It's a shortage. So anyway, help yourselves. Mrs. Lacko is cutting the cake, and we're going to start our meeting pretty soon. All right, well, it looks like Mrs. Cockhill is not going to make it in for the start of her meeting. So, is she at 7:30?
She is.
Is she coming in?
She's here.
It's only 7:20.
Is it still 7:29?
Geez. Plenty of time to spare.
All right. All right, Mrs. ...
That I cannot help you with.
There you go.
Thank you, Mrs. Cockhill.
Cheaters there. Yep, eight hard work.
Thank you. That's where I get mine, too.
Four down.
Oh, perfect.
Of course, now she can't see, but don't worry.
Okay, somehow I'm not logged in. I thought...
You don't have passwords, you change them.
Okay. Okay, I'm in. Is everybody else logged in? Okay, everybody joined the meeting?
Joanne is logging in now.
Okay. Am I getting signed into your technicals? All right.
And if you join, it shows up in the attendance. Well, pretty good.
I don't know your pass.
No.
I know it. Everybody.
Okay. Are we all board?
We're good. First two caps. First two initials caps.
Your name has to be capital J, capital C.
How many that can read up?
All right, join the meeting. This meeting will now come to order, Mrs. Sanderwee, call the board please. Mrs. Cockhill?
Here.
Mr. Gambiani?
Here.
Mr. Matheson?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mrs. Swanson?
Here.
Mr. Roman?
Here.
Mrs. Intihar?
Here.
Mrs. Dawkins, will you listen to the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I would like a motion and a second to open the public hearing on the 2014-2015 budget.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Roman, seconded by Mrs. Swanson. Mrs. Sanderwee, call the board, please, and board members vote online. Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Cockhill?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar? Yes, the public hearing is now open.
Please vote online.
Vote online, please. We're trying. All righty, the public hearing is now open. We have two citizens who wish to speak. Find my notes here, but I need to tell you. Okay, but this is not... Oh, okay. You get three minutes, please come to the mic and state your name and address, and please keep your comments reserved for the three minutes, and make them respectful on the topic of the budget. So, Mrs. Shaw.
Good evening, I'm Jan Shaw, I live in Wheaton. Basically, the phone I have, it's not on.
It's not on.
It'll take a few seconds to turn on.
And then it'll take just a little bit to on.
Hello?
Yeah.
Better? I'm Jan Shaw, and I live in Wheaton.
I've spoken here many times before. I was looking at the budget and some of the figures here. In May, we ended up with $20 million in our budget at the end of the month, which sounds like it's a great number, except you just borrowed $10 million by putting more stuff on the bonds, and we know that there was a $14 million grant back in 2012. So basically, the thing is, we've still continued to spend more than we're taking in. We just hired a new superintendent, and we let the old one, the previous superintendent quit. I'd like to pick a bone with the fact that you gave him this $40,000 gift. I actually believe the five school board members who voted to forgive the $40,000 should write a check for $8,000 each and give it to the school. Sorry, folks, that wasn't your money to give away. I also don't believe we should ever pay a superintendent more than the governor and the state gets. They have been doing a fantastic job, and I don't think she gets paid anywhere near what you're planning to pay. Now, going forward, we need to start cutting some things. No administrative contract should be more than two years, because she should give the next board a chance to do something. Next point, all administrators should pay their pension portion, just let the teachers do. All administrators should be kicking in for their benefits, health care benefits, just like the teachers do. There should be no buyback of vacation days unused. What other issues to be having there? There's lots of places to be saving money. I was here for a legislative breakfast, and the school legislators asked if you could tell them how much Common Core costs to implement. A month or so later, I actually put it for you and said, hey, what kind of data have you gotten so far? Because everybody said, oh, no problem, we'll get you those figures. Dr. Ray Armour told me they're not getting any figures as to what Common Core costs, nor do they want to know. They have no intentions of getting that. As school board members, I would think you would want to know, how much are we spending in text, extra time for the teachers to learn this, extra money on technology, extra money to administer tests? It's costing us a fortune. We know the funded mandate for preschool, not for the special needs kids, but for having typically developing students in with the preschool kids, about 50% of the cost to have those typically developed students there is covered by their tuition. 50% of the cost is subsidized by the taxpayers. That needs to get back to our state legislature, because they can't keep legislating that we have to do something, and the schools just go, yes, no problem, and then hand the bill to the taxpayers, we're broke. Median family income for the state of Illinois actually peaked in 1999. Inflation adjusted about $62,000 per family. It's now around $52,000 per family. It's falling. You cannot keep hitting taxpayers with a falling income with higher tax to the max taxes in order to give people raises. And I guess the bottom line that I just don't get is how come we're spending more and more money and giving it to the same people to do the same job, and we're not getting any better product? It just doesn't make sense to me. So, while I have no detailed estimation on your budget as to what needs to be cut, you need to start looking for cuts, because you cannot keep spending more than what comes in. We do not have the money.
Mr. Longs.
Harold Longs of Winfield. I just want to make some overview comments regarding the budget. I went through the budget, and the only one issue that I have, the budget that was posted, you know, it shows actual 2010, 11, 11, 12, 12, 13. However, it's missing the most important number, which is the 13, 14 number. So when you compare the actual, so the past fiscal year with the budget for 13, 14, 14, 15, it makes a lot more sense. Having actual numbers from four years ago really doesn't help looking forward. I did look at some of the line items, I'm not going to detail the dollar amounts, but I noticed that we budgeted less money this year than the actuals for last year. And some of it was in the education fund, some of it was in the operation maintenance fund, in the purchase services area, and also in the capital expenditures. I noticed that capital expenditures in both the education fund and the building and operations is lower than it was last year, and last year was very low. So I don't know, and we have, you know, a bucket list of, you know, millions of dollars, and we're only going to be spending a couple hundred thousand dollars on capital expenditures. So I don't know how we're going to, you know, do those repairs and stuff to the buildings and upgrade technology. Like I said, there was purchase services. We spent more than what was budget for this coming year, and there was a few other items, too, benefits and so on, as you go across the different funds, I noticed. So I don't think we're going to, you know, even though we're going to, I assume we're going to vote on the budget the next meeting, I doubt this budget's going to hold true and be a budget balance come the end of the next fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Longs. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in this public hearing on the budget? Hearing no one, I'll ask for a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Okay, so hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing on the budget.
So, those are the public hearing. I second.
Moved by Mr. Roman, seconded by Mr. Paulson. Mrs. Sanderwee, call the board, please. Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Cockhill?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar? Yes. Yes, the public hearing is now closed, thank you. Are there any modifications to the agenda? Are there any modifications to the agenda that board members wish to make?
I'd like to make one. On the consent agenda, I'd like to remove item five and make it an action item. The health insurance.
Are there any objections to doing that? I actually have one, but I think we're going to discuss that when we discuss the budget. So I'm not sure that it would change our decision if we have to... Unless there's a decision that we can make that can be different, I prefer not to move it. But if the board members wish to move it, if we all agree, we can move it. Okay.
Normally, on a consent agenda, board members are allowed to move anything they wish.
Without, okay, without, I thought it had to be with the approval of the board to move it. Okay, all right, then, then fine, let's get that moved, and we'll put that out as an action item. I know I need to give Mrs. Sander a moment or two to move it on.
I have a question, please. When I move it, where do you want it in your action lineup? It will automatically put it to the bottom, but if you want, I can easily arrange it as soon as you tell me where you want it. You want it to move it.
Are you asking me?
I'm asking the president, I guess.
Doesn't matter to Mr. Madison, I think we just put her at the end, let it go at the end. If that's the least, I'm on my way.
Okay. Where it will automatically put it, but I can move it above the others or whatever your choice.
Okay, then we're good to go again. Okay. Okay, superintendent's report.
It's that exciting time of the year, the countdown has begun, because next week, on the 21st, all of the students, grades one through 12, will be back, and on the 22nd, early childhood and kindergarten will come as well. And you can see energy, and the momentum is palpable, not only through the amount of emails that I am getting, but the amount of traffic at stores, all around, a lot of preparations that are happening. We've had some really great new teacher training, I really want to compliment the HR department. We had some phenomenal training with over 80 new staff members in the last few days. We also have a week of learning lists going on right now, where we've had over 400 staff members coming on their own time to learn different things, whether it's about writing or reading comprehension strategies, a lot of things on Google and technology have been happening, and that will continue for the rest of this week. We have been busy adding a few sections as elementary enrollment has come in. We have added two sections at Pleasant Hill, two sections at Sandberg, and two sections at Weasbrook because of increase in enrollment. We've also had ongoing training for a day and a half with all the administrators in the district as we talk about the things that we are going to do, especially with technology and with construction. And we've also been really busy with construction projects, and I'm going to let Bill give us an update on that.
Thank you, Mrs. Dawkins. I'm going to turn it over quickly to Mr. Robinson, John Robinson, who is our new facility director. He came into the district officially on July 1st. He wasn't a little bit early to get caught up to speed on things, but he walked into a number of projects. I believe we were doing projects at pretty much every school this summer, all 20, had some form of work going on or another. So I'm going to turn it over to John, he's going to give a brief update to the board on the status of the projects and where we're at.
Thanks, Bill. So in addition to what Faith said, it's been very busy in our department, and all our buildings as well. All 20 buildings were touched this summer, and I'm going to briefly touch on what we did, and give questions at the end, I'll be happy to answer them. We did five complete firearm systems in our buildings. Two each VAC systems, 15 buildings had lighting upgrades, temperature control grates and variable frequency drives at all schools, five flooring projects, including one large pit infill. That was fun. Three roofs, one track, four pavement projects. Two computer labs were refurbished. Two LLC circulation desks are coming. One locker replaced them. We rehabbed a new transition house. All the buildings are clean, grounds look great. It was all done on time, and it'll be under budget. Any questions?
I think we're done.
John, one question. Great job for your summer, especially you just coming on board. I think it's tremendous work that's been done. I mentioned this to Mrs. Dawkins today at lunch, at the Rotary Lunch. Last year at this time, I think Milton Township and the city of Wheaton began to repave and roads near Wheaton Warrenville South High School, Weasbrook, and out here, right here in front of the SFC. And it just kind of surprised me that the entire summer went by, and then two weeks before school started, all of this road destruction work began. And then I just learned that paving by a number of roads by Pleasant Hill is going on right now, or is scheduled. I would just ask if there's some way we could kind of alert municipalities and township, if they have road repaving that want to do, or road construction work around our schools, if they could schedule it earlier in the summer, when there's not as much activity around the schools as there is this week and next week? I noticed, for example, in Weasbrook today, although there's no road construction this year, they're picking up school supplies and registering, there was a lot of traffic activity. And this seems to be the most inopportune time for this sort of construction activity to be going on. So if they would get the calendar up and ask for some cooperation from our related municipalities, I think that would be wise.
In our dialogue with them, we will definitely...
And I can jump in real quick on this also. You are correct, Pleasant Hill workers going to start a... Got a tip from a community member who told me that this work was going to happen in Winfield. Someone deferred to that it was a state project, a state roadway, and that was the story I got. But I should mention, Wheaton and Warrenville are very good about letting us know about these projects, and we attend the pre-bid meetings or pre-construction meetings, so we're aware of what's going on. The one in front of our building didn't take forever, they did a great project in front of Emerson this year, people doing a woodlawn. They coordinated with our back-to-school, our walk-in registration day. And they're always keeping us on the loop on that as well as Warrenville does. And throughout the year, when they've got projects going on that impact busking and such. So we do work closely with our municipalities, and they're under usually the short time window that we are as well, that they are very cognizant of that. But sometimes they do bump up against each other.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question on the superintendent's report. Schools are going to be starting shortly, as we know. Is there going to be a kickoff day, an event day? Last year, we attended a, I guess the kickoff day, I guess is the right term.
This year, and just so everybody knows, in some of the past years, we have all collected and had all of the district 200 staff together. Sometimes we've had a motivational speaker, sometimes a superintendent has addressed the group. We decided, especially since we have a change in leadership going on, that we would not do that at the very beginning of this year. Another reason for that is we have an enormous amount of initiatives that are going on with Common Core, and also with new standards and instruction, and changing in our grading practices, that what our staff was really clamoring for at the end of the year is more time at the building level to get many of these things accomplished. So they are getting the gift of time and not having the travel time over to one meeting, and are turning in their agendas to me. And there's a lot of common themes across all of the agendas, which we're putting out with professional learning committees, but we won't all be gathering in one place this year.
One of the things that I was going to do, and I will do it within the next day or two, is get all the adapted schools assigned. So if you did want to kind of take the principal of your school and, you know, be there for their opening day, I mean, it's certainly something, you know, you could do it if you want. I know I'm missing the big kickoff, too, but I think, you know, in this case, time that our staff wanted at their buildings is more appropriate, so.
I learned that from Faith today, that a new teacher meeting...
Yes.
Was a couple days ago.
And today.
And today. There are new superintendent to be, appeared and made a presentation, and took a couple hours to talk to people and stuff, which looked great. So I applaud him for doing, taking that mission.
Are there any public comments on agenda items? I think there's Dan Williamson on the transition program.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I'm Dan Williamson, and I...
Yes, and I need, I'm sorry. I need to go through my statement, I'm sorry. Before you start, I need to go through my statement. Sorry, you can stay there. Please use the microphone, state your name and address, address your comments to the board, limit your comments to three minutes, and be factual and courteous, and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board. Thank you.
I will do my best.
I know.
My name is Dan Williamson, and I reside at 1220 Midwest Lane, and we're the property owner at 100 Bridge Street, where the transition program has relocated. I'm speaking on behalf of a taxpayer and want to make a couple of quick comments. It's, I know from the people I've interacted with, it's been a very busy summer. John and Bill's group, John Robinson and Bill Farley, the guys have been working very hard. I think most of you know that, and you've seen it, and it's been a really big task to get into our building, and we, as landlords, are doing everything we can to make sure it's a smooth transition, and we're thrilled that they're there. Number two, at the board meeting, when our lease was approved, we were in negotiations, hoping to have other parts go to the district for operations. We're unfortunate because of several financial issues and overruns. Maybe in the future. We wish it would work, we know there's assets that need to be protected, but we understand fiscal decisions are most important. We are thrilled with everybody on the transition team that we've met. And, you know, my wife and I are personally and emotionally invested, and we look forward to continuing to do everything we can, including making up some equipment deficiencies and supplies whenever possible from our vast inventory that we have, to make the transition even better for everybody. And we look forward to the future. And I just want to thank everybody we've run into with the district, because it has been a great experience, and we look forward to continuing to be a great experience. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Williamson. I spoke with a couple people during the new teacher orientation who had worked with transition last year, and they're equally excited to be, you know, in the new building and in your property there. So thank you very much for making it so comfortable for us, we appreciate it.
So you're welcome, and if there's any questions, and if there's any questions... If there's any questions, I'll be having to answer them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a consent agenda. And now we have nine items on the consent agenda. Acceptance of gifts from PTAs, approval to post revised policy 5.30 on the personnel hiring process, and criteria for public review and comment. Approval to post revised policy 7.60, resident-student for public review and comment. Approval to post high school junior English materials. Approval of annual certification on serious safety hazard bus groups. Approval of occupancy permits and statements of completion from the Regional Office of Education. Approval of bills payable in payroll. Approval of minutes, July 9th, 2014, open and close, July 7th, 8th, and 9th, 2014, special closed sessions, July 28th, 2014, special close, July 30th, 2014, special meeting. And approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to March 2013. Approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrators certified, classified, and non-union staff. This is typically the time when I ask if any items should be removed. We already have one removed, are there any other items that board members would like to remove?
This is not actually to remove it, but just to let you know, on the approval of the minutes, the July 7th, 8th, and 9th, closed, special closed, I have given Mrs. Sander some edits, there were some attendance inaccuracies there. So I've given them to her, she's going to fix them, so when we approve them, we'll be approving them as corrected, yes.
Thank you. Anything else?
With respect to item four, both Mrs. Swanson and I have raised some questions about that. We support item number four, so we don't want to remove from the consent agenda, but we might get some discussion on it. One other comment on the consent agenda, I had asked a question through an email to the superintendent about the contract with the janitorial service, and if you could just review what that response was.
Can we first, I have a motion to...
It's a topic on this bill list, I saw it on the bill list, the payment of those terms.
Right, but could we at least get the consent agenda on the floor, and then we can have discussion on items on the consent agenda? So would somebody like to move that we approve the consent agenda? Moved by Mr. Paulson.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cockhill. Now it's ready for discussion. So I don't know who wants to kick that off, but... So I don't know who wants to kick that off, but.
Would you like to comment on your minutes again?
No, no, I don't.
Yeah, again, we've had multiple appearances by individuals that are in the staff, are on the contractor service list, and we've been concerned about that. And I'd asked that question as part of the bill list. I saw the bill paying on that and I was informed in response to that that I'd like to make part of the public comments.
Sure. I think that you all had received a letter. Mr. Farley, after the last meeting, did meet with the contractual services and talk about the concerns that had come to the board regarding insurance for those employees. I am going to turn it over to Mr. Farley in a little bit to give some more detail to that. But it was not part of the negotiated contract that that would be provided. There were some lists of additional costs that we could incur if we were going to be offering insurance for those employees. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Farley for a few of those details.
Thank you, Mrs. Delquist. I did, after the last board of education meeting, request the board to sit down and meet with staff members from GCA to discuss the comments that were made, have been made on multiple occasions by their staff members relative to health care costs. The bid that was set out for our services had, did not include health care as one of the listed requisite requirements. It was in the assumed to be soon arriving Affordable Care Act and that item would take care of itself. Obviously, there's been some delays in that ACA. The vendor has provided to us cost sheets based on different levels of coverage that they could offer their staff members. I will remind and caution the board that the GCA is in a bargaining group. They are bargaining with the service employees, international union. So this is part of their bargaining with them. They were scheduled to meet with the union to go through bargaining again. I think at the last discussion, we heard from one of their staff members talking to you about how much they make and how much their raises should be. Again, this is bargaining. Part of the reason we outsource this is so we don't get in the middle of these bargaining issues. We do not get into the middle of bargaining issues with our bus drivers nor our cleaning service providers. The SEIU is obviously lining folks up to come and speak to you. There are in other districts where they're complaining about the health care costs that they're receiving and what percentage they are paying. So this is not uncommon, whether they've got insurance or not, to show up at board meetings and request that the board act or negotiate on their behalf. There are ranges in this letter that the board received from anywhere from $70,000 up to over $300,000, depending on the amount of insurance we want to provide and/or at what rate we want to provide it. So again, I, our bid was put out with the Affordable Care Act in mind. That obviously hasn't happened yet. If we do wish to provide additional coverage, there is, the options are laid out for us. I would remind the board also that our bid does have other benefit packages in there that include vacation time for years of service and, I would say, a very decent salary rate to attract and maintain good people. So basically, if we wish to, we are entering, I believe, the third year or second year of our contract with them. We have one more year left. The Affordable Care Act is set to come into play here within the next year unless it gets delayed again. So we can entertain options to look at additional costs that the vendor would pass back to us or we can maintain the current contract we have.
Thank you, Bill. I just want to, again, I want to make a couple of comments. Number one, I want to say that, you know, we are sensitive to all public comments and take those to heart. And we've had this, you know, we've had a number of appearances and I recognize what it's all about, but I do want to say that we're addressing it. You know, we're not in a position to make any alteration. You know, we are under contract for this year and another year, I believe. And, you know, but, you know, again, I think, again, it's something that we, you know, we need to respond to the community when we hear those type of topics. And, you know, it's troubling and I'm disappointed by it, but it is what it is. And, you know, that group will have to negotiate with their own group and so on. And our hands are really tied to deal with it. So it's really why I'm going to bring it up.
Okay, thank you. Any other, Mr. Brown?
Yes, I mentioned before, both Rosemary and I sent emails about item number four on the consent agenda, basically asking for background information about how does the current, this proposed published listing materials for junior English increase or improve the rigor of it could run out? How were the additional materials selected and who did the selection, basically? And Rosemary, if you have anything more?
As the reading level of what's expected of our high school students, and part of that is Common Core, but what is, what was grade level material is now at a much higher level by the time we're at 11th and 12th grade. What was Illinois reading material is a full year behind of what Common Core expectations. Also with Common Core came an emphasis on informational text and being able to navigate all of that and a much more also emphasis of comparing two texts at one time, not just being able to read and comprehend one text, but looking at the same theme from a different author's perspectives and doing that. So additional texts were needed. We're keeping many of the texts that we've already used in the novels that we've had. It's not that we're throwing everything out and becoming informational text. Literature is still very important at the high school level. But we looked at what holes we have to be able to provide those experiences for our students. And a whole group of teachers spent many, many, many hours looking at the new standards and looking at what other materials needed to supplement that. And then we went through and repiloted those materials with students and with teachers to see, was there too much content? Was there really enough time to tackle that particular text? Did we need to pull something in from a different time period? All of that was looked at by this group of teachers. And then some texts were thrown out after that. Some additional ones were looked at. There was feedback gathered from students too, which were the more rigorous or really helped them understand a particular standard. And those are how the materials were chosen and are brought to you now. With Common Core, just so that you know, Common Core doesn't tell you what texts to use. It doesn't tell you what assessments to use. It doesn't tell you what types of teaching or instructional practices to use. It is just, we want all 11th graders to be able to draw comparisons between two texts or two themes or use the proper grammar in speaking and writing to be able to convince ideas. It is up to us to choose what type of text, how we're going to assess that, and how we're going to teach them.
So if I understand correctly, Faith, not only has the rigor of the English being taught at the junior level increased or improved, if I may use that term, but all of the texts that were posted in this junior English materials, included in that posting for junior English materials, were selected by our staff, our teachers.
Correct.
Thanks.
And just kind of a follow-up on that. All of the texts and some of the things that are in there are not used in their entirety. If you looked at that list, it's quite daunting if you thought you were going to do all of that. There are pieces of that that are lifted for examples in imagery or there are examples with a style or with voice. And all of the items, as students come into class, are listed in the syllabus ahead of time and parents are asked to sign off on that so they know all of the texts that we're going to use. And if for some reason there was any question with that, parents can call and additional texts or an optional text can be used. Happens very rarely, but that is an option.
And then the doctor's, sorry. Good.
I just have been frustrated, and I, and here I am, so we're over here, and you're in the thick of it, because I have many clients who are in different districts and I ask them all the time, you know, so are you all figuring out? And it feels like everybody's revving the wheel and doing the same thing to get to the rigors of Common Core. And does it, is it frustrating to you that there isn't more help on the federal, Illinois, regional level to say, instead of everybody's figuring it out for themselves?
Actually, there is more cohesion in finding some resources because what is fourth grade math, there's fourth grade math everywhere. But I wouldn't want our state government or our federal government to say, here is your textbook, or here is your tool, or these are the instructional practices that we want you to use. Each community is different. Each teacher, I believe, has his or her own style and should be, have freedom to pick some of the tools and even the pace at which you would cover some of those standards because every classroom of students is going to be different and we need to differentiate that. So yes, it is cumbersome that our teachers are grappling with different ways to teach, but to just say, everybody's going to do this on September 18th and everybody's going to do this on September 19th really takes away local control and the art of teaching. So I like that there's cohesion and we're going to agree on what fifth graders all need to know across 45 states. But how we get there and the tools that we use and how we assess it locally would still be under our control. But it is daunting to do it all at one time. That is, that is, that is difficult, especially for our elementary teachers because they are not just teachers of math or just teachers of language arts. They're grappling with, with all of it. There are some real benefits to Common Core, the Illinois math standards. District 200 had raised the standards, but Illinois math standards were pretty low, speaking as a math person. So it was great to see that the Common Core really brought up the rigor on that. Common Core has brought back grammar in both, which is great. And it is really a good thing that we are focusing on informational text. There is no way that I can say we're going to give everybody the content knowledge they need by the time they leave us as seniors, that the world isn't going to change. So they've got to be able to read informational text, get things from the internet, and continue to learn and develop. And when I went through school, there was a much more emphasis on literature and stories. And we still need to do that, but they need to know how to learn about content and new developments after they leave us.
And I just wanted to follow up. My, my questions were along the same line. And really what I wanted to sort of emphasize for the sake of the public is that when it comes to developing curriculum, we have actually had policy in place for a long time that tells us how we as a district develop curriculum, which is not at all at odds with Common Core and is the same policy that we used in developing this one. And we have many policies, but one in particular, 6.80, talks about the fact that teaching of difficult subjects is appropriate in our schools. And 6.210 talks about how you have to have balanced views on things and, but, but need to have that rigor. And that is all part of what you did when you chose this curriculum. But it does also recognize that from time to time, as you mentioned, there would be parents who have a particular area of concern and there is a process for them to go to, to address that concern. And I just wanted to make sure as we bring in a whole host of new materials that all of our principals and assistant principals, because we've had some new people in and out, are all aware of that process and they're all on the same page on opt-ins, opt-outs, you know, don't opt, that sort of thing.
Right, I did have another meeting with all the high school assistant principals just today and we went through that. And the department chairs do have a few new staff members, but they were already ahead of me and had already covered that and were going to be addressing it on institute day again.
And one, one thing that I think you and I discussed that I want to raise, it's my understanding that as a result of this change in reading list and curriculum, we're actually only purchasing about seven new books. So we are using a lot of the same material that we've used in the past.
Correct. And when we went to Common Core with math, you may recall at the elementary level, we made a large purchase for new tools. When we are switching to the new Common Core Language Arts in nine days, 10 days, we kept our current materials and just added to those and added to each of the libraries and classrooms so that there was a wide range of texts that was higher and also texts that was below level to help with intervention piece of that. Because a lot of the texts and things that we had already chosen at District 200 was at a higher level than what state standards.
Yeah, I have one follow-up question that's kind of a, you know, well, let me just state it. The number one is the, what phase are we on induction of Common Core? You know, as far as curriculum area. You know, again, to respond a little bit to the public comments, you know, there is a cost of Common Core and I understand that. But what, as a trained educator, I'd like to have your opinion on what, how are students, if we did not adopt Common Core and we're competing against the big rule with 45 other states, would that put us in inefficiency or whatever? And what are the anticipated, what do you want to call it, challenges that we foresee in this current year, school year as part of that transition?
I think I'll take your second question first. If we were not to adopt Common Core and some of these standards, where would our students be? In the math part of Common Core, there are mathematical practices that are actually the same from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade, and one of them is perseverance. And many of our students, because they can pick up their phone and get anything instantly, perseverance is not necessarily one of their strengths. And the ability to grapple with a mathematical problem and have it not come to you within the first 30 seconds of looking at it is difficult. Yeah, that's a skill that they need and that really wasn't addressed in our math curriculum prior to that. Also with, I joke around and maybe I shouldn't, that in Illinois, there was this great big emphasis on probability. And I never really understood that unless we were going to go to Vegas. And there, now, the emphasis is really where it should be on algebra, which is the, really the building block and the math skills that students will need once they leave us. Where, because we were still being measured by ISAT, by the Illinois State Test, we had to do all the probability things, we had to do that. If we now didn't make that switch, and this is the school year that the new PARC test that'll be off of Common Core really hit, although Illinois changed all of their test questions to be Common Core aligned this last school year, our students would not have the fraction knowledge that they need to be able to do that, nor would they have the algebra skills that they need to when they get ready to take more of the ACT test. If you recall the graphs that I showed prior to this, and I'll be doing that again in September, on our state tests, our elementars and our middle schools were at 85, 90% of the students passing. And then all of a sudden, we would get to the high school and we'd have 77% of our students passing the test. It wasn't that from ninth grade to 11th grade, all of a sudden, our students became less able. It was that there was a difference in what was being tested. Now, with what our students will take on ACT backs up and is supported by 10th, 9th, 8th, 7th, 6th, 5th, where we went to Illinois and then we switched to national standards prior to that. So if we didn't make that switch, we would continue to see that gap between middle school and high school. Also, what's able to happen now with Common Core is that each state is able to be compared to another state where we weren't able to do that before. With no child left behind, each state had their own test. So if Mississippi had an easier test, they could say that they have 90% of their students passing. Massachusetts has a much more difficult test. 90% passing that test is very different. There's a common playing field about what we would expect students to know. So it's, it's easier to judge materials and programs because everybody's using the same assessment data piece on that. Spent a lot of time talking about math. If we did not make the switch to Common Core, we would, in English Language Arts, we'd have the same issue because now we're going to be tested on different things. But also, many of our students across Illinois, District 200 is not unique to that at all, are having to take remediation classes when they get to college regarding their reading skills. And with Common Core, we are building that block, not starting at the high school level, but the instructional level that's required of reading text starts getting higher at the third grade, fourth grade, the fifth grade. So there isn't that much of a jump and we needed to do that. Plus the emphasis on informational text. And our writing standards in Illinois, prior to this, were pretty low. Okay, I didn't use the atrocious word that was just shared here. In District 200. And District 200 had higher standards than that, but definitely Common Core has brought that emphasis back and there's also an emphasis on speaking and listening, which is so important. Students will not be able to get jobs if they can't interview and then speak well. So that'll be very, very critical for our students to be able to do. And then the other thing that Common Core does that hadn't been done prior to the Illinois standards is the integration of technology. And can they use these devices to express their own ideas? Can they use search engines and be able to weigh the value of a source? I joke around, but when I went through elementary school and I got an assignment, I had two resources, my mother and the World Book Encyclopedia. And I thought both were credible, so I accepted everything that they had to say. Now I can Google and I have 600 sites. We have to teach students how to determine what's credible out there. We don't want them to leave us and think that everything that they read in print is quality and believable. And that's a difference as well that Common Core tackles. Sorry, I can talk Common Core.
No, that's right. What phase are we at? What phase are we at?
Right, that was only question two. So with the phases, we started with math last year and we've done bits and pieces, but last year we went kindergarten all the way through algebra and we revised a few of the standards with that as we did lessons learned. This year in math, we're adding geometry and algebra two onto that. And then we started bits and pieces at the middle school level with Language Arts last year with Common Core. Two of our high school years were already in that process, but we turned the switch now from kindergarten all the way through 11th grade for English Language Arts. Trainings have been going on, began working my first year here on reading frameworks, getting us ready to have common language to implement these new standards. But now we have new, we've written district assessments off of Common Core because we don't want to wait until March to see where everybody is at. So there are new online assessments that all of our students, you know, kindergarten, took last year in math. And then we have written new assessments for English Language Arts that will be going on that same way. And then much, much work was done in writing last year because I think that was our biggest opportunity to improve. So we've developed a writing framework and writing expectations for every single grade level because Common Core was very, very general, didn't give specifics about really what writing skills needed to happen within each grade. So we created a common set of vocabulary and framework that the language starts at kindergarten and then builds so that we're using all the same terminology, which will very much help our English learners and our low-income students as well. So all that training is in place and that's going to be what keeps me very, very busy when I get going. You had one more question, which was sort of about the challenges with that, but I think I won't say that.
Yeah, and I just want to make it clear that, again, there are costs. Some, I've heard textbooks, but I mean, most of it is training of the teachers, I assume.
Correct.
And then, thirdly, you know, this, as you now step back from being, running the district, you're getting back to your reality and dealing with this topic as you've so successfully done over the last number of years. Is that correct?
That is true. I never really stopped doing that, so that was, and I did point out that District 200 didn't accept Common Core blindly and I think I've talked about that before, but we had committees of teachers that go through and we changed some of the Common Core standards and even put them in different grade levels where we thought it was appropriate. And states and local districts are allowed to change a percentage of that. So it isn't that we just said, oh yes, we've accepted all of that. We thought that the phonics part of Common Core was lacking and added some more detail in that kindergarten and first grade. We changed some of the math standards and actually pushed them to a grade level lower because we thought our students could accept a bigger challenge than what was in Common Core. You're exactly right that the cost is the professional development piece, but I don't feel that it is a, oh geez, we have to do this because the nation has said, there are great reasons why we needed to increase the rigor in the state of Illinois in math and language arts and writing. So while it's hard to say this is the training for Common Core because it's also the training on what is good instruction and many of these things I would have been in the process of doing with or without the new Common Core standards because our world is changing dramatically and we have to be better at preparing our students for that new world.
One thing I wanted to ask as a follow-up to Mr. Matheson's question is, it's my understanding that we're not yet seeing the cost of really doing that test, that the online, you know, so I don't want us to get real comfortable thinking, but you know, this really isn't a no-cost. I think that's going to be the, having bandwidth, having every student have a computer all at the same time, taking the same test, I think is the big financial challenge that we're going to have with this.
Correct. That is supposed to happen this spring. The pilots in other districts were, politically correct, I want to use. What? Interesting. Yes, there were a lot of problems as people piloted that and the assessment piece does come at a cost. You can implement new standards and have districts come up with their own assessments without having that piece. I think that they're very separate. You can implement national standards, but the testing of that or the consequences and the things that go along with that are attached to it, but are somewhat separate.
As a follow-up that I really like to see in four months, we're halfway between now and when we have to do the test, is maybe an update on where we stand on being successful at that testing level, if we're prepared to do it, I guess. And Mr. Math, I would hope you have some time.
For the online testing?
Yeah, I don't mean now, but in four months if we're not there.
One of the great things is that we did pilot online testing last year to test some of our own bandwidth on what we'd be able to do that on district-generated tests because we didn't want to wait until, here are the state tests. So we did test some of that. Bandwidth is not going to be an issue here at all. The compatibility, what we are concerned about is a little more difficult to test. If you can imagine, every single student in multiple states, it's 9:00, okay, you all log into the exact same site. We've had some healthcare issues, we've had some other, you know, where that many computers sending toward the exact same site, we're worried about that. But that's on, that's not on us, but we're worried about that. And even during the pilot, that was a concern.
Fails day one, you're back to six more days of testing and everybody in the states waiting to send their information. It's not going to be on us. We're ready and we have device count ready for all elementary and middle, high school is probably okay for its first year. We have enough, but there'll be older devices, but bandwidth and everything else, we qualify at the recommended level, higher than recommended level and on all their assessments, I can share that information with you.
So that deficiency that is being referred to is really outside of our control. It's a national level, if you want to call it that.
Correct.
Okay.
We're bound here in Illinois.
We don't have to follow up in four months.
Are there any other, are there any other questions on the consent agenda?
One question in follow-up to Common Core, I know it's not part of, but next generation of science standards, I believe are coming.
Uh, yes.
Less publicity, but future reality.
So there is not a Common Core set of science standards. However, Illinois did adopt the next generation of science standards in January and there are some districts that are rushing to do that implementation in science immediately in all grade levels. Did not take me very long to make the decision, especially at the elementary world where we've just done math and language arts back-to-back, that we needed to get good at both of those, although I did have a committee of teachers sit with me and, oh, you know, we've got, we've got to do STEM and we've got to do, yes, but there's only so much professional development and new things that we can do. However, at the middle school level this year, that is a focus of ours, to get in and look at the new standards, see how they match or do not match with what we're currently doing and see what materials and things we need to be able to build the budget for that. So that'll be starting at the middle school level and incorporating the high school, but we're going to wait a while in the elementary because of all the new things that were already in place.
Okay. Are we done with the consent agenda? All righty. Mrs. Sander, will you?
Yes, and I just want to clarify that what you're voting on is to approve the consent agenda minus item five and with the edits to the closed session minutes as given by Mrs. Swanson.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cambi, Mr. Cambiani, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar?
Yes.
I cannot, there we go. Okay, we have three action items now, the first of which is an approval of agreement with the YMCA for the Safe and Sound Program. And Mrs. Dahlquist, do you have anything to add to what you've already read and had questions about?
Just that we have some recent good news, that we have five, at least five students that are enrolled in each of the YMCA program, which is going to make it available at both of those schools. That was enough of the number to make sure that those programs start.
I may have a motion to approve the agreement with the YMCA for the Safe and Sound Program.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Matheson.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cackill. Is there any further discussion?
Just one quick question. I know we had some FOIA or emails to the board from, I think, Wisconsin School. Have we had conversations with those parents and discussed their concerns?
Yes. I met with a group of parents over at Johnson before the end of the school year, June, and I know Dr. Penobles also met with those. We also had another follow-up meeting with leadership from the YMCA and individualized phone calls were had as well to talk about different funding resources and scholarships and how to creatively meet the needs that weren't happening, especially at Johnson, and how that could be accomplished at the YMCA.
Any other questions?
Is it surprising that there's only five sign-ups?
No, actually, it's not at this point. It is because that there was such limited participation and involvement at both of those sites that it was difficult to keep that financially going and being self-supported. So, and it is also a new system. So until students get in and become more successful, it's that word of mouth that really helps that improve. So I am not surprised that the enrollment is somewhat small. Also, what typically happens is the closer you get to the start of the school year, the more people are saying, oh, I just got this job and I need to have care for my children or this fell through or there's a lot of last-minute sign-ups for a before and after-school care program.
Okay, are there any other questions? Mrs. Sander, will you call the roll, please? And please vote online. Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Cambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar? Yes, motion passes. Our second action item is approval of a contract for athletic trainer services for Moore and Bussoff High School. May I have a motion and a second to approve this contract, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Swanson?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Paulson. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Sander, will you call the roll, please? Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Active stain on this, I work with this company.
Mr. Cambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar? Yes, motion passes. Our third action item is the approval, I'm sorry, yes, approval of Health and Dental Insurance Administration stop loss, FSA administration, long-term disability and life policies. Chair will entertain a motion to put this on the floor, please.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Roman?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Paulson. Any comments from staff? Or we're just open up for discussion? No comments? Okay.
I think just discussion.
All right, discussion. Mr. Matheson?
Yes, I'm.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. One of the things, you know, we have been self-insured for a number of years now and just philosophically, self-insurance is we pay a stop-loss, we collect what I'll call a, or refund is a better probably word, a estimated incurred cost under the stop-loss and, you know, and that in theory becomes our cost of health insurance. And that is comparable to buying what I'll call a premium-based policy. And I think historically, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Farley, over the last number of years, we've had somewhat of a stable, or probably a savings, if you want to compare it, to what I would call a premium-based insurance program. And I believe this year particularly, we'll see it a little more as we talk about the budget, I think we had, you know, some real high demand and probably our costs really skyrocketed. I'd be curious, I guess in the times as we move forward now, I'm questioning whether, and even with this document here, I'm questioning whether we need to be in that risk business and whether we should be buying premium-based insurance, you know, mainly because the volatility of the uncertainty. And we're, again, we'll be talking about it a little later tonight, but, you know, that volatility, you know, by being self-insured, we're taking on that risk. And, you know, we've won a couple of years, but I think this year we lost quite significantly. Or, you know, again, I'd like to hear a comment on that, but, you know, so I want to make sure that we're proceeding in the right direction if we're going to continue to do self-insurance. I know we have a contract year coming up, but that uncertainty and the volatility that can occur with self-insurance is troubling to me when we're dealing with the financial constraints we're working with. So I'd like to hear some comment on that before we vote on this later.
Sure. Mr. Matheson's correct, we have been self-insured for a long number of years, probably in 25 years since we were in a more of a conventional marketplace for medical insurance. We have over 1,000 lives that we insure. We are a large insured group. You'll find that most school districts that are of that size are self-insured. We do investigate, we work with the broker, we do investigate through the broker going to a fully-paid type premium plan. It has not been cost-effective to look at it and coming off, and Mr. Matheson's correct, this has been a horrendous year, that's what we're used, but it's been a bad year for us and I think I've said this over, over the year, that we were experiencing high health claims, much higher than normal. You know, when we go to conventional market, they're going to look at our claims history and they're going to see, you know, what's happened and some of what you saw in our renewal tonight is based on the fact that we're coming off a horrendous claim year just to give them, you know, to talk in somewhat specifics. Our premiums last year, our administrative costs went down 6% last year for this year that we're just entering. Our stop-loss costs, the amount we pay for specific and aggregate coverage is about $480,000. We have paid out, or Blue Cross Shield has paid out claims in excess of $800,000 this year at $480,000 policy and we still have two months to go. We generally see higher, you know, higher claims going into the summer especially and some of those large claims are lagging on, so that's why you're seeing some increase. But again, back to Mr. Matheson's original point, we do investigate conventional policies from time to time. Because of our size, it's been more cost-effective to begin a self-insure plan. We have been very fortunate, we've had very good years. When we switched to the Blues, we saved quite a bit of money. We have a 99.9% market or, you know, in network plan going with the Blues. They provide the administrative services, basically, you know, they facilitate our plan document and it's worked very well. This year has been a bad year. There is advantages, but, you know, when you talk about our workers' comp or our liability insurance, we're in pools. There are pools out there, there are a lot of smaller districts that get into those pools because they don't have the same amount of lives that we do insure. In fact, when we do inquire about those pools, because some of them are under the administration of the same group as the workers' comp and liability insurance, they don't want us, we're too big. We can sway the pool too dramatically by our lives. So we do look at all that, we do investigate it, again, that, but, you know, when we have a year like this after running very well for a number, you know, over a period of time, it is pretty dramatic. I don't know if that answers the question, but, you know, again, we're, Penny, if we will look at that conventional market, the broker sitting here, he's going to have to share the numbers that we just went through or are going through right now and then, you know, the conventional will look at it. the conventional will look at it as well. I believe we did look at a conventional this year as well. What was the amount, dollar amount over?
It was between $1,500 and $2,000 per employee per year. That's more expensive on a fully-insured plan than being self-funded and just paying the claims as they incur.
Yeah. Can you please use the mic for that answer, some motion?
I'll introduce Dan Wilkie as what benefit decision, who's the broker of the district.
Okay. Yeah, as I was saying, we did go out to a number of markets, both on the self-funded side and fully-insured side. The fully-insured composite claims were about $1,500 to $2,000 per employee per year more cost than the self-funded plan that we were running. And that's the reason that we have stayed with the self-funded option.
One follow-up question that you're, I mean, if I understand it right, there's a premium that we pay for the stop-loss. We pay an administrative cost, and then we pay the cost of whatever claims would be under the, underneath the stop-loss.
Right.
So, when you say it's going to be $1,500 less, I mean, isn't that based on the real experience in claims that occur under the stop-loss? Are you making assumptions in arriving there? Or I don't, I don't understand why that's so, it's such a predictable number.
Because you can, you can make it a per-employee-per-month cost by the actual claims that you pay, plus the premiums that you pay, plus the stop-loss and the administration, as you're mentioning. When you go and get a fully-insured quote, it's one premium, but that premium is coming out to be $1,500 to $2,000 per year more than when you roll up all the claims costs, the administrative costs, and the stop-loss fees all rolled together. And that's typically what happens in a self-funded market over the course of, you know, five to 10 years. You're pulling out the margins that are in a fully-insured premium. At your size group, a thousand employees, we find it always makes more sense to be self-funded over that long term.
Okay. So, again, you're still making some estimate in those numbers, though, as they pertain to what the, what the cost will be incurred on by average on each participant. I mean, there is an assumption, the premium is based on, you know, or the estimated cost is based on what you anticipate the cost to be, the claims to be, I guess would be a better way to say it. So, there is, no, I mean, it's not fixed. We found that out in this year's budget.
Well, it's, if you look back at the last 12 months, those are actual numbers. We're not estimating. We're taking the actual claims for 12 months, plus the actual fees, the administrative fees and the stop-loss fees, and we're taking that, divided by a thousand or so subscribers, and making that into an annual cost per subscriber. We're then comparing that against a quote that we would get on a fully-insured basis. So, you're just paying the premiums. We're not insuring the claims. The district isn't responsible for the claims underneath the specific stop-loss. You're just paying a fixed premium. That premium, when I compare it on an annual basis, is going to be $1,500 to $2,000 more this year than it is just taking your claims on a 12-month basis and adding your claims, your administrative fees, and your stop-loss premiums.
And again, without getting into the weeds on this too much, is that a cost to the district, or is that because we split that insurance cost?
It's a gross, it's a gross cost. It's not taking into account employee contributions.
So, so we would, we would have 80% of that for our teachers, which is our biggest group, so.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. I, you know, I guess, I have given some thought to this as well, because I, I think, well, first of all, this is not the venue to make a midstream switch.
Recording it right now.
Well, that's right. That's right. So, just to say that I think this discussion is not really about the potential of making a switch tonight, but it is about things that maybe we need to be thinking about when the new superintendent comes. Many of the things that he will be looking at in terms of budget, this would be one of them. And that, to me, would be the appropriate time to be thinking about a different direction, should we ever want to do that. And I guess my thought is, it may be more expensive, but maybe this is what you're getting at, Mr. Matheson, is that it's possible, you certainly have to factor in what is the expense that's worth it to you to be predictable as to how you're going to end up that year versus not. And sometimes, that is worth it to you. And as we move into money being more, our resources being tighter and tighter, while it's tempting to want to save at every opportunity, perhaps, one thing that we need to be thinking about is that being in a predictable path in the long run may be better for us financially than saving 12 years and then getting hit badly for two or three years, for instance. And just, it's a philosophical thing, I guess, and I think it's something that needs to be explored in more depth. And the appropriate time to me is after our new superintendent is on board and is taking a look at all of our operations. But I do think it is a valid question to review, what, what is it costing us to go a different route that might offer us more stability, and is that extra cost worth it to us for that reason?
And I think we used to have an insurance committee that actually, and we still do have an insurance committee. So, in my view, you know, a recommendation of that nature should come up through the insurance committee. I'm not sure that we as a board at 30,000 feet, you know, should be developing the recommendation. I think, I think we need to have somebody look at it and bring to us the different recommendations, or say to us, "We recommend this change of philosophy." And obviously, it's our decision, but, but I think the legwork and all of that should be done by, by committee, like we do a lot of our, a lot of our finance committee, and maybe the insurance committee at that point, you know, wants to have the finance committee review, you know, the recommendation. I don't know how that, all that will go, but I agree with you. I don't think tonight is the time to necessarily change, change horses, because obviously, you know, we have our insurance expert looking at, looking at things for us. We have our financial, financial expert looking at things for us. If there were any better choices, in my view, those would have been brought to us tonight, and they would have been voting maybe in a different way. So, I think for this year, I think this is kind of where we are. And I agree with Mr. Matheson. It's a cause for concern, and I think we should, you know, evaluate in the future whether or not we want to change this philosophy. But I think, you know, we have, we're facing what we're facing tonight, and we need to move on with it.
If I can just jump in just quickly, just for what it's worth, I've been in this business for a long time, in previous lives. We've had this conversation with self-funded and fully-funded programs, and in districts that I've worked in, have bounced back and forth. Your two experts are right on in a historical sense. Long-term, given the size of the district, this self-funded will be best long-term. What you get into when you have a fully-funded is the increases, and correct me, is the increases imposed by whatever that company is, that you really have no control over. And although when you make those changes, it's very cost-effective, because you get in low. And when it becomes a quote, you get in low, and then it's 7%, the next year, 8%, 12%, 14%, and you all of a sudden can't get out of that. And those increases are not predictable. You, and based on your experience and given the size, those costs can be very significant down the road because they just grow and grow and grow. But if you look at the long-term history, certainly at a district, you know, if you were at a 250th district, boy, that's a different kind of number, but at a thousand, that self-funding is really going to work out best for the long term. And I think, our history suggests that it is, albeit this year. So, you know, I know the insurance company, the insurance committee's meeting tomorrow, and, you know, we'll talk about a lot of things, but just from the historical standpoint and watching it in different areas, you know, we're really in the right direction. But it does raise a concern that year when, oh my gosh, what happened. But oh my gosh, what happened when you get those 7%, 10%, 12%, 14% premium increases that you kind of get stuck in. And that is pretty hard to get out of that to go back to a self-funded perspective.
Just so I understand completely, from your analysis, if we went to a premium-based coverage, that cost would be anywhere from $1,500 per employee to $2,000 per employee over what we paid this past year, you know, claims, administrative costs, and what is the other cost?
Stop-loss.
Stop-loss coverage premiums. So, that, and as I roughly calculated, that would be somewhere between $1.4 million and $8.6 million, more than what we've paid this past year.
Not quite that much. It would be, it's about between $1.4 and $2 million.
$1.4 and $2 million?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's correct.
And this past year was, not to use Gil's word, but unusual, or horrendous year. So, we're talking about cost in excess of that amount over what's been a horrendous year, which has been aberration over what the 25 years we've been self-insured to go.
We've, yeah, we've been in pretty good stead here, especially once we switched to the Blues, five, six, seven years.
Five, six, seven years, okay. So, it would be incumbent upon us to do some studying this coming year. But I'm satisfied that our experts have evaluated it, and for at least this year, this is the right course of action to take.
One follow-up to that, Jim, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused by this, because one of the things we're going to talk about in the budget, we anticipated in the prior year, a number. And that number was a premium, a cost that we funded on a monthly basis for the anticipated claims. And we're going to be talking in a few minutes about the problem of the higher cost of insurance issue. So, somewhere I'm getting a disconnect here. I mean, we're incurring real costs that are higher than the estimated. I'm confused why, if we, what we just said, I'm confused why we didn't have a big savings or whatever in the comparative budget from 2014. You know, we're going to see that we're raising the budget way up. It's more than $100,000 and some $1,000 on the administrative cost. So, there's some cost in there, the actual costs, that are much higher than we anticipated when we set those monthly premiums, if you want to call it, that were funded into the health insurance program. Is that correct? Or am I, why am I, why are we having this big increase in costs compared to budget last year? Where am I missing a link here? Do we not have higher benefit costs in 2014 than we did? That's, that's some financial constraint. How could that happen if we have fixed premiums? I mean, I don't, you know, we're making the estimate of $1,000 differential. Let me, let me say it this way. I think Barbara's corrected that this is a long time we're discussing this. I think it's insurance cost. So, I think we need to get the answer to that question. I'm confused by it, number one. Number two, we're also entering in the new Affordable Care Act, and, you know, that's going to have bearing on how we fund premiums and so on. And also, we're entering negotiations, and that's a big cost of negotiation. So, I think we really have to have a strong handle on what insurance costs are going to be in the future, and that insurance committee really has to help us out in that capacity. So, I guess that's where I'm going to leave it at this point. I'm going to support the vote yes on this position, but I think we, as we move forward into this next year, this is a very challenging area. So, I think we need to do that.
Okay. If there are no further comments, Mr. Sander, will you call the roll, please? Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cockill?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar? Yes. Motion passes. Okay. Next, we have an oral report, technology device update. Mrs. Dolchus, Mr. Matheson, please.
Mr. Matheson earlier said, "Are you returning to your regular day job?" And I'd like to say that right now, I'm in my regular day job, not as superintendent when we do this presentation. So, if you recall, back in the spring, we had a very long discussion about one-to-one devices and what we should do, and we had, we wrestled with, we don't have a whole lot of money in the budget, and how are we going to do all of this? And one of the requests from the board was for us to come up with different options based on student fees, on how we would do that. So, we have created that and are going to go through that, but I also want you to know that we've come up with a different option that we would like to present as well, that isn't going one-to-one, and it is some things that we could do, starting now, to be able to modernize some of our classrooms and bring a lower ratio of student to devices. So, you've seen this before. This is the vision for where we'd like instruction to be in District 200. There are certainly components of this that are impacted if we had more technology. There are also parts of this that we can do as professional development and with teachers to begin creating this type of learning environment without additional things that plug in and use electricity. So, we worked with a huge committee, Rod and I, and went through and designed this. We also had it revised by principals. We spent quite a bit of time with this in the spring. We've just done some more training on it in the last week with the administrators, and we are scheduled to go ahead and share this with everyone and the staff in the fall. And we intend to use that fit goal, or that fit vision, to be able to design future professional development, and also to think about how would we purchase devices, and how would we use this? Because just to buy devices without having it change instruction, or without having it change student learning, would be a lot of waste of resources and of time. So, we want to keep that vision of what we'd like our learning environment to be as we go forward. So, we also, since we've met, we've finished the Engage 200 process. And definitely, some of the themes that came out of that were increasing professional development, still thinking about what do we do with minimal cost, additional cost of the budget, and then also that theme of modernizing the classroom. How do we make our students prepared for the era in which they're going to live once they leave us? So, the options that we want to talk about tonight, one of them is moving to one-to-one. And when I say one-to-one, we're talking about each student having a device, starting at a grade level and expanding that to other grade levels. There are other districts that have done that already, where the device is the student's. It goes home. It travels from class to class. That's the, kind of the common definition of one-to-one devices. We're also going to talk about option two, which would be increasing student access devices, but not going to the actual one-to-one. So, with the one-to-one, all students would obviously have access to a device, because every student might have the same device. They would go home, travel with them. With instruction, with staff, one of the benefits is everybody's got the same device. You're not saying, "Well, I'm this screen, or this keyboard. It's this way. Access is a little bit easier." And having a device can be really motivating to students to have their own technology. Some of the concerns that come along with one-to-one, it's a big cost to the budget, and we'll share those numbers here in a little bit. To do that without professional development and just to have all those one-to-one devices would be able to do the exact same thing that we've already done with some extra bells and whistles, without the professional development of what the new learning and the new activities would be. It just helps us to do the same thing that we've always done, which would be a waste. Some of the concern also, if you go one-to-one, you pick a great device, and it is perfect for the English department. That same device is not optimal for math class. That same device is not necessarily optimal for art classes. And that if you have one device, it does limit some of the things that you can do differently among the different content areas. Another concern with the sustainability of one-to-one, once you start it, you say, "Okay, all eighth graders are going to have a device." Okay? Next year, as ninth graders, they will want that device. And yet, you'll have another group of eighth graders. So, it begins to be a locked-in cost that the district would need to incur if we do that. We also, and we'll be talking about the budget a little later, it would be very, very difficult to find the resources within our existing budget to go one-to-one. I'm going to turn it over a little bit to Rod, who's going to talk more about those financial.
Okay. So, as we look, there's a sheet in your green folder that I didn't put out in the, it's kind of the little breakdown here of the things you're going to look at here. We kind of using different scenarios, looking at both student fees, which was a recommendation from the board, and some reallocations of funds in the next year and this next year. I'm not usually loud enough. I guess I need a mic. No one's ever told me I needed a mic. The, with the revenues reallocations, we also have some leases that we could reallocate some of the money. So, again, without new monies, those columns kind of show a little bit about what we could possibly increase revenue-wise if there wasn't a standard increase. You'll also see on that spreadsheet, you know, we're taking a 1.5 CPI. I know we use different figures to just say that those little slight increases. But we also have to look at the new expenditures, too. A one-to-one does require the access points upfront. A different approach might not require the, the... A different approach might not require the next 176 access points to be installed and everything right by day one. We also have to front-load any of this with the correct amount of instructional and tech support too with the one-to-one. You'll notice PD and the things are not even really allocated in this one. This, this approach really kind of comes about getting the devices first. If, I will skip on this one, it's over here. I took then just the breakdown on the next slide of the three different scenarios. And again, we can play with these numbers all we want. Say we purchase, say we lease, we have a hundred dollar fee or a fifty dollar student fee. What I wanted to try to point out is, in this four-year period, starting at, let's say, 15, 16, to 17, 18, and then what would the ongoing cost be? The first column might be doable. I mean, can we find another $300,000? Not this year, but maybe in the next year to start. But again, it has to be sustainable. If we were to go one-to-one, we need to then adhere to the plan that we're also going to find an additional 1.2 the following year, which again is then an increase in the tech budget, which of course I would love to see an increase in the tech budget of 1.5 million. But by the end of it, you're increasing the tech budget, which is now around 2 million. To the end of this, it'd be 5.6 million every year. It's not a one-time. We would have to have that 5.6 million in the budget, because it's going up and it's got to stay there. As you can see, the additional each year. So again, if we were to go to a lease with a fifty dollar student fee, or, I can play with all different kinds of scenarios. You can see the monies that we have coming off. There is not any more money coming off of the 2 million tech budget in these next three years, other than the middle school and the high school leases, and changing some other kinds of things around. We can play, if CPI hit 4%, some of those lines would change, but really it's, in the best-case scenario, even adding, doubling the tech budget again now to 2 million. Again, I just, yeah.
All right, so I want to talk about option two a little bit. That would be if we took whatever monies we had each year to increase the number of devices that we had, and front-load on professional development. And talk a little bit about what plans we have in place for this year to give you a taste of what that might look like. It's, would be then that we wouldn't have a device for every student. It would be that you would have devices in classrooms for students to use. So, for example, at the high school level, teacher teaches math, there would be a set of devices that first period would use, second period would also use those same devices, third period would use those devices. They wouldn't travel with students, they would be at the classroom level. With that, you would need to have some devices that are available for checkout for those of our students that cannot afford them at home. So there would still need to be that compatibility of what we can do at home and what would be done during class. So it would allow for some differences in the types of devices that the different content areas need. It is less expensive to do it that way, because you don't have to go to a one-to-one ratio. And then it also does not lock you into every year we're needing to purchase an entire amount of devices for the next grade level of students. I do believe that that's more sustainable and more flexible, and we have the ability to start some of that now. And talking with other districts that have gone to one-to-one, unless there's a significant amount of professional development, there is a lot of wasted time or resources because there hasn't been a change in instruction. And if you think about a student's day, you do not want the student to be in front of their device for 100% of their time. You want them to have access to that tool. There's still a real value in just talking and being able to discuss and having access. It's not each student at their computer not interacting face-to-face with people and with teachers, and that gives a little bit more of that flexibility. So, some of the concerns, however, is if you have multiple devices, the math department is different than the language arts department, different than the science department, then there's a whole lot of PD and tech support that is needed to be able to manage all of that. There's certainly more of a learning curve for students, because it's not the exact same device. However, if you think about how fast technology is changing, we are not teaching students to be user-friendly on one device, because by next year, there's going to be a different device anyway. We're using them to perpetuate the type of learning and the things that we need, not the type of device. Rollout becomes a little bit more difficult with something like that, because it isn't, well, all eighth graders get this, and then all ninth graders get this. We would have to talk about what are the types of devices, and each year would be a different decision about what do we have in the budget to be able to support this. And then I'm going to turn it back to Rod to talk more about finances.
Okay, so when we come up with financial options for option two, this one's a little different than the first one, where we would know the set amount going in. In this one, it would be varied by year to year, depending on available funds. So again, if we were to go back to this one and say, in year 15, 16, you know, essentially in the tech budget, let's take away the student fee, but you know, we don't want to increase the student fee, we're not giving them a device for their own. Say there's 300,000 right now that I know is coming off of leases or whatever in that year. I would apply that value of X, or 300,000, plus whatever else we could get, to whatever the FIT decides is the plan. Is it fifth-grade classrooms this year? And again, it would be fifth grade across the whole district, it'd be eighth grade across. Would it be four or five grade levels? What would that X amount be applied to? And it could be different devices. Again, it could be in science, it might be some iPads and some Chromebooks, so that, because they do want to use different types of devices. It doesn't lock us down. So again, the lease money coming off, there's also less of an infrastructure hit. With this one, we have a very integrated system that allows us to watch and see when things are starting to get drained in a certain area. So we can start to watch right away and, you know, buy 20 access points to start the year, and go and selectively place them in the, in the places that still a lot of students are bringing their own devices and those classroom devices are being used. It's not a, again, you know, a lot of schools have gone one-to-one and they put an access point in every room and they say you have to. A lot of the tech people I talked to then say, that was kind of overkill, we could probably kill a third of them. Maybe it's two-thirds of the rooms need to be. We would be able to selectively place these access points and save a lot of money doing that. Professional development costs also will be less. We'll be dealing with less people up at the front end. The other thing that I don't have on here with financial options too is, it also puts a little bit of the management piece, along with the professional development, on the staff. The teacher has those five devices. We're going to say, well, my tech guys aren't going to have to go. They're really going to take an ownership of what apps are on those devices. Right now, when it's part of a cart, they expect us to go and do it, and they expect us to, there's a little bit of an ownership piece, which I see a real savings of us driving around, updating every little app for every person. Those are their devices, this is my classroom, these are my devices. They have an ownership, we're going to save a lot of money on those things.
Okay. So for a variety of reasons, option two is more aligned with the FIT vision of what we've been talking about. Because it wouldn't be mass rollout to an entire grade level at a time, and we would be able to pick and choose schools or departments that were ready to do this, we could really have the emphasis be changing on instruction instead of devices going out to all freshmen, and we're going to try to manage science, social studies, foreign language, English class, all of those things. We could focus it on, this is the device, and this is how instruction should change from that. And then that would allow the emphasis on professional development. We're pretty lean on the professional development department. And it would allow for differentiated instruction for staff, because we would be able to say, okay, who are the shining stars that are really ready to go out and do this? And build capacity within them so that they can then help me train other staff members as we go along. So it would allow for some of that differentiation piece. I do also believe that it's more aligned with Engage 200. Definitely, we heard about professional development, that needed to happen. And by really taking off smaller pieces of this, we'll be allowed to do that. It does decrease the cost, and then it still works on modernizing classrooms and providing access during instruction, but it would be a device per student as they would travel throughout the day. All right. I do want to highlight just a little bit of a change that we made to give you an idea of how we're trying to accomplish some of this, whether it's eventually moving to one-to-one, or if it's going with option two. The plans prior to the summer, and we have it in the tech budget, that we're going to be giving a device to all staff members at middle school and high school level, so that they would have a common device and they could begin to explore and use that, and then hopefully be able to help students use that when we go to one-to-one. The problem with that is giving out a device to all middle school and high school staff without an emphasis on how it would change the instruction and without professional development. We saw an opportunity for a lot of waste to happen with that. And it would really be a lot of PD on the device as it rolls out, and not on what it would look like to change instruction. So what we changed to is to not purchasing devices for all middle school and high school staff, and instead, and principals, by the way, were elated at this option.
That's worth.
Is, we're going to choose 20 to 30% of staff, and principals might do that by department, they might do that by high-functioning PLCs, they might be doing it by a department that they think really needs this opportunity. So it wouldn't necessarily be the lead teachers on this. And then for the staff members that get this, it would be contingent on the fact that they would either participate or leave these hours of professional development that would be about the device, about instruction, and also showing how it impacted student learning. We just got done with a week of learning, we also had school days last June. These people would then present these ideas and being able to help with the professional development and help it be about instruction, not about the device. So the new plans save quite a bit of money by doing that. It allows for a second wave, if we were ready to do this, by second semester. It also has a built-in system at each school to expand professional development. So it isn't me coming to them, or Lee Hook, or Rod, coming to them and saying, this is, it would be developing leadership within each of the buildings to talk about how we're going to integrate technology. This also would allow some money for it happened at the elementary level too, because as we heard from Engage 200, it wasn't just middle school and high school that wanted modernized classrooms, it was easy through 12th grade. Some of these positives, it does allow then for different departments and different content areas to look at different devices and pilot that, to see really what is the best practice. It would allow us for money for students to check out. So for those students that don't have access to computers at home, they would still be able to check them out and use them much like you would a library book, they would check out and it still belongs to the school, but you have access and you have the ability to use that at home. It allows us to do something now, where with the one-to-one, I really don't feel with the budget, or if we had just gone into devices for middle school and high school staff, that it really would have helped with push of instruction. And then the thing that I love is it begins to build a system for professional development that is more sustainable than the three of us running around to try and do professional development on all of the things that need to happen, early childhood through 12th grade. So I feel surprised that, I hear I've been showing my cards a lot. I think we should go with option two and continue to try to build capacity within our budget to spend money on technology, but not lock us into a system of one-to-one devices that, given all of the things that we're going to talk about with the budget, or we don't know, I think that this is a better option. It allows us to really work on our core business, which is instruction and student.
Questions?
Concerns?
Well, I love that you have thought that through, and didn't just go with the shining object of, oh, you already, you know, new devices, which if you ask any kid, I'm sure that they want, their parents might think that's what they want. But this makes so much sense, and love giving, leaders will rise from, from within each building, and then I'm sure they'll love the chair, and that's going to create a whole culture of we're working together, and I mean, that's perfect. So I think that, and that we can do it kids now, we can implement it, and yeah, there you go. So, how would you decide what to buy?
Very wonderful.
Right. So when we brought the middle school and the high school administrators in, and we talked about this idea, that of course was, well, how are we wanting to do that? And we did limit it to some choices, not like just everything that's out there. And then Rod purchased samples and devices. They're actually at the high schools and the middle schools now, and the department chairs and key leaders are exploring and looking at those different options, and are going to have some choice in that. And that was by design, because we wanted them to have some ownership in that process. And then also, if two science PLCs, the chemistry department and the physics department, they don't pick the actual same device, because it's just for staff at this point to be able to do that, then we'll have a much better testing ground to figure out what we would want to purchase for all those classrooms before investing all that money.
Faith, have you shared this with Superintendent Schuler, and can you give his views and feedback on this?
In general terms, yes. I talked with him before we met with the middle school and high school principals, and said, you know, we'd like to not go to having all these devices. He was very much, it's got to change instruction, and this is a better plan to do that. Also, if you have been reading some of the board reports from Caitlin, they also were going to, the process of limiting that ratio, but not going to one-to-one. And the emphasis on professional development with the given budget that we have, this, he also believes that this has a much better impact on changing instruction than just buying devices across the board.
As I recall, this is consistent with the views you shared on the process. I'm glad you'd have.
And leases that are going to roll off, how come you don't have to lease them again? Or do?
I will have to do something. The amounts that are listed on that spreadsheet are not the actual total lease amount. Now, it includes either a payout or doing only, re-leasing the labs and keeping the other machines behind. It's a kind of a cushioned estimate, like the elementary lease. I haven't got my actual numbers. The elementary lease says I'll retain 110. I actually think the elementary lease is 240 right now, if I remember correctly. So I'm taking about 50% of it to make sure that we, you're right, we do, there are plans built into that. It's not, I'm getting all that money back. No, it's, I don't want to call it wishful thinking, it's actually pretty close. We've already done estimates on about how much we'd have to do to get a buyout, or we're going to switch out just the labs at the elementary and keep the classrooms with the same machines they have. They're still good machines, so we've thought of all that through.
And this doesn't, going with, you know, not pushing to one-to-one, doesn't get us out of our financial woes. We're still need, we're still going to need additional funds to get to a level of devices that we would have access in many, many classrooms. That isn't, you know, I didn't magically come up with millions of dollars as we talked through this. This just allows some of the money that we had put aside this year for devices to start along that process, so that we're in a better place to pick devices, and that would come at a smaller price tag than for a one-to-one. So it doesn't, we still would need to increase the technology budget, even as leases fall off. We still might want to look at a student fee option, but we needed to agree as a district, are we trying to build something for one-to-one, or are we trying to build capacity and professional development first? Because we don't have money to do all of that.
Let me, let me just say, I really like this approach, because this is very reminiscent of what I heard in the presentation by 214. And those last words that you used is exactly what that presentation was about, which is building capacity in the staff first, as opposed to going right away. Now, I think that they eventually are migrating toward a particular device, but that didn't happen until their staff had the opportunity to try different things and came back and said, you know what, this just isn't working for us. And that actually, though, was a key point that their school board committed to, saying, you know what, we have to be okay with teachers and staff coming back to us and saying, you know, we just don't like these devices, and they don't work for us. And we can't look upon that and say, well, that's wasted money, you know, you, you have to do something with it. So I think that is a key point for us to remember going forward, is that we have to be able to embrace failure as part of the process in order to get us to. be able to embrace failure as part of the process in order to get us to where we want to go. But I do really like the idea of anything that makes us more nimble about being able to change to a device that's better, as opposed to investing in all those devices and then everything has to look like that. So, I think it's a great, great idea.
A couple of questions. Number one, when we met at the tech center a couple months back, we talked about a number, as I recall, like a million dollars per grade, that all of a sudden seemed to disappear. But, you know, I'm hearing 2 million per year is going to get us someplace. And we were talking about a million dollars per district.
If you look at your spreadsheet there at the bottom, the expenditures, it was actually 700,000 per grade level. You'll see this number, 700,000 total increase. What we didn't have at that thing was what stuff was falling off in revenues and fees. So, the number is different, but really, that expenditures and cost is probably, if you take that figure across, that was what was presented in April. This time, we went a little bit farther and tried to look at what money do I know is coming off of the tech budget? We looked at applied, the student fees and looking at different type of purchase options. But that 700,000 is, that's, the whole bottom part is really pretty much in the April presentation.
Okay. So, therefore, if we're looking at Option Two, the number that showed up on the ongoing basis was 2 million a year. Is that the cost we're talking about here? Again, I'm a little confused by...
With Option Two?
With Option Two, right here in the bottom right.
With the lease?
Whatever way.
Oh, I thought you were talking about Action Two versus reducing, but you were talking about with the one-to-one scenario.
This is not Option Two. Option Two is not here. Am I right about that?
Right.
This is just the one-to-one scenario.
Yeah.
What was the bottom line number annually on Option Two?
Whatever we could spend.
That would be up to us each year, because it would, we would look at what is left in the budget, what could we afford to do that, and then bring additional devices. So, there is an A-Lock step. This is the exact amount that we would be providing every single year, because like right now, with our current budget, we're not going to be buying many devices at all. There's just not money to do that. If we were able to re-align some of our budgets or cut an additional revenue source, then you could say, "Okay, we're really going to make a push to go through our science classes at the middle school level or our math department at the high school level and allocate those resources." Option Two doesn't put us into a locked pattern of this is the amount of money we would need every year to do that.
Okay. So, then if I look at this one, this sheet here, the $2 million under the lease program with the hundred-dollar fee is a 2,037 ongoing annual cost.
You would have to add that to my current budget, and it would be, I'd, that's why I'm saying...
2 million more.
Would be more a million a year from that year forever moving forward.
And Option Two, as we're describing it, is something less than this additional 2 million. Is that a fair statement?
Yes. If we got additional revenues, we could make it more than that, but I don't see how we would be, you know, we wouldn't be going more than one-to-one. This would be a way to modernize our classrooms and not have the cost of every student having a price.
So, if I'm hearing that right, then we're saying that it'll be something less than 2 million per year, additional monies to be spent on technology to move forward with what you're calling Option Two?
Correct.